We've got most of our crew with us. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Appreciate everybody being with us on this nice, cool morning out there. It's Tuesday, the 14th day of April, 2020. This is the Weber County Commissioners' regular scheduled meeting. Again, appreciate everybody being with us. I'd like to start this meeting. We're going to ask Commissioner Harvey to lead us in a pledge. Commissioner Jenkins will do the invocation and then I'll do the thought of the day. We'll proceed to that point. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands. One nation under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Commissioner Jenkins?
Yes, sir. Here we go. Our heavenly fathers, we come before this day. We give thanks for the blessings in our lives. We're grateful to be able to serve government and serve our people. Be part of government, I should say, serve our people. And we're grateful for the opportunities we have in life. We pray, Lord, at this time that God bless us as a country, as a state, and certainly as a county, that we can see our ways to overcome this coronavirus and get on top of it and that we'll be able to return back to normal, especially with our economy. We pray that God attend us today, that have us the spirit of be with us, that the decisions we make will be in the best benefit of our citizens to the county. We say this in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ.
Amen. Amen. Thank you. Commissioner Harvey, thank you for that pledge. As I stood up here and looked out my window and saw the American flag around outside my window, it was worked out perfectly. So.
Great.
Thank you very much. So Commissioners, thought of the day, as I think back over this last number of weeks, seems like a number of weeks now, I want to talk about the word sacrifice. And because of these times, we've asked the citizens of this county, the state, the nation, to make a lot of sacrifices to where we were before. And as I look at the sacrifices that we've asked our citizens to make, ourselves to make, I look at our social sacrifices, dealing with our families, our friends, our ability to worship, the interaction we have with our friends, associates, working associates. I look at our economic sacrifices. A number of people have taken some major economic sacrifices with job loss, pay cuts, a lot of fear for the future. What is this, when is this an end? And what does that mean for their family well-being, for their economic well-being? And I look at our civic sacrifices, Commissioners, the ability to talk to our neighbors. We're coming up actually this Saturday, this weekend, on a very important opportunity for us to be involved civically as we look for our future leadership in this county. And a week or so from now, we'll be dealing with our state leadership. This is a different time than I've ever seen before. And our ability to have public meetings. This meeting this morning is a perfect example of that, where typically this would be a public meeting. We'd be able to see eye to eye, face to face, and ask questions. We're not right now have that ability to do it. Talk to our neighbors about who they think our best representation should be for the future. So Commissioners, this is some different times. And all I can think about is a saying that my old coach used to tell me, and that is as follows. If you don't sacrifice for what you want, what you want will be the sacrifice. So Commissioners, I would say this, that we're all making sacrifices, but we have hope for the light at the end of the tunnel and that what we're doing today will get us back on a course in a reasonably short period of time, that we can be back to our normal lives and this sacrifice will be for naught. So that's my thought, Commissioners.
Wonderful thought.
Thank you. Let's move on to public comments. I do have, and I don't know if Commissioners Harvey Jenkins, you received one. I did receive a public comment that was emailed in from Gloria Martinez. I wanted to cover that, make sure that the public knows that we are taking these as they come in. She made a comment that I wanted to submit my public comments for the next Weber County Commission meeting. Just heard that the county is letting go of most of the library staff, which is disappointing. Understand that we are unique in unique times, but the library has been a great resource. I am not very computer savvy, so I can't always find the information. I'm looking for online, I'm looking for online, guess that's informational. And I call a lot of state or city offices. I'm often waiting on hold, never, I never get an answer. The library has been great because I can call them and help and I've always found what I needed. These are things that have nothing to do with the library, but they are still helping me out over the phone. I call someone and they always answer. Someone else recommended for me to call the library because they helped me out as well. Thank you for your time and consideration. Gloria Martinez. Ms. Martinez, I just want you to know that we are not letting go a major share of our library staff. What we have asked is for some of our part-time, just in a very temporary period of time, until we get back in operations, that we may allow them to take a furlough or leave. This is not a layoff. This is a furlough, give them the opportunity, obviously, to come back when we're up and operating. So I would just want to make sure it's clear to the public that that's, we're not letting go the library staff. We will look at some temporary furloughs. And I think we have with us this morning Sarah Swan. Sarah, she's actually the lead on this. Sarah, do you want to lay in on this?
I think what you said, Gage, is a good description. We're just asking those areas that are closed, that have part-time folks, to take a temporarily, a temporary leave of absence. At that time, they'll still maintain all of their benefits. They'll still accrue sick and vacation and they'll be able to collect unemployment, which in many cases will be better than what they're currently receiving here. So we hope it's just a small transition period and we hope that everything remains beneficial to them as employees.
Yeah, absolutely. And let me just reiterate what we had a director's meeting yesterday. Make sure the public understands the county financial position is very healthy. We have no concerns. We're probably as healthy, if not healthier, than we've ever been in the past number of years. It's not our intent to lay off people, but we do have a responsibility to look at the production and do temporary furloughs when the work, when the workload's not there. That's something that any good business would do and we're following good business procedures here at the county. So with that, Commissioners, Harvey or Jenkins, would you like to add to that? That's the only public comment I've received.
No, I think you explained that adequately. Thank you.
I want to, in fairness to Ms. Martinez, it's not just the library, but you know, with our public facilities, the libraries and our other public facilities, such as the I sheet, the Golden Spike Event Center, the Ogden-Eckles Conference Center, the theaters, many of our facilities are shut down. And so the part-time people in those areas, it's, we're being unilateral in our decision and it's, it's an interest to running a good, healthy business. Weber County is a corporation and just like most corporations, you do what you can to make sure that the corporation is alive when you get through things. And so this will be good for, this will be good for the county and hopefully good for the employees why the buildings are closed.
Exactly. We think it's a good, it's a good win-win situation for the public and our employees. So I think it's fair. Okay. No other comments. Commissioners, I'm going to move on to the consent items. Let me go through the consent items E. 1 through 6. Number 1, request for approval of warrants 2632 through 2662 and 448770 through 448905 in the amount of $2,108,463.40. Number 2, request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $34,307.2. 3, request for approval of the minutes for the meeting held last week, April 7th, 2020. 4, request for approval of new business licenses. 5, request for approval of a settlement agreement by and between Weber County and the UniFirst Corporation. 6, request for approval of retirement agreements by and between Weber County and the following people, Michael Ledemza, Linda Guzman, and Curtis Frost. Commissioners, questions on the consent items?
No concerns by me. I'd be glad to make a motion to approve.
Okay. Before we take that, I'm going to go to Ricky for explanation. Ricky?
Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We issued nine purchase orders this week, a quiet week from that perspective, for $34,000. Almost half of that amount, or $17,000, is for the library and that will go towards engineering fees for, and architectural fees to assess damage sustained during the earthquake, as well as to purchase copy paper and some signage. 20% or $7,000 is for the jail and that will go to purchasing gloves. As far as checks, we issued 167 checks for $2.1 million this week. 53% of that amount, or $1.1 million, was transportation projects paid for out of the sales tax, transportation tax. And that went primarily to the two projects, the 12th Street West project and 2550 South project. 22% of the checks were, amount was $466,000 and that was on behalf of the transfer station to pay for disposal fees. And then 5% or $109,000 is for our paramedic fund and that went toward purchasing two cabs and chassis. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Ricky?
You know, Ricky, it was a big expenditure month. I mean, that's, that's a lot of bills.
Yes, whenever we, especially the transfer station, whenever we have that and then those transportation funds.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. I'm ready for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion second by Commissioner Harvey. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries. Consent agenda is approved. Thank you. Let's move on to the action items. Action item F1, request for approval of contract by and between Weber County and the Pacific Office Automation for the purchase and servicing imaging equipment, including copiers and printers. Ricky, this is your department.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a project that we've actually been thinking about or working on for at least two years. Currently, the county, the way we handle our printers and our copy machines is on a department-by-department basis. So each department makes their own decisions on what they buy, who they buy it from, how much they pay. They do the negotiations or not. And that's how we've been doing it. We thought it might be helpful, similar to what we do with our telephone service and with our computer equipment, to look into consolidating the services and bringing them in under one roof to take advantage of purchasing as a group, as well as having the management being done by our IT department so that we have consistency across departments. We worked with a company called Newquo, who specializes in this kind of review. We talked with them and we brought in several vendors, issued an RFP and, and looked at several excellent vendors and their proposals. The contract we have before you is, that was provided by Pacific Office Automation. We have, legal has looked at through the, the contract materials and has given their blessing. We've looked at it from a financial standpoint. At a high level, this contract and the consolidation of these services will result in a 30% reduction in our printer and copier cost spending, which will amount to, over the next five years, an $80,000 savings to county taxpayers. In addition to that, one of the things that we do at the county that we've done for, for years, we're pretty frugal. Most counties, most departments keep their machines for, the average length is seven or eight years, which is much longer than what the industry recommends, which is the five years. But we're really frugal and so we do that. In return, our servicing costs go up towards the end of the life as those copy machines get older. So in addition to these savings, here's, here's what the, this contract will provide. Every off, every machine will be replaced, could be replaced as soon as five years, but we have the option at the end of a five-year contract to actually buy the machine for one year and then operate it without any lease payments for as long as we desire. So there, that, that would be additional savings above and beyond the savings that I talked about. And the one other thing I'll talk about is there is actually an energy savings with the machines that we would be using, because they power up more quickly, sometimes twice as fast as, as the machines that we currently have, will actually have an energy savings for each copy machine of $46 per year. I realize that's pretty small, but when you have 40 copiers, that can add up and it's just a little bit more friendly. So that is a summary of the contract. We will have an addendum that we will bring before the commission. In doing our final checks this morning, we, we saw two things that we wanted to adjust in the contract. The vendor has already agreed, but we didn't have a signed version of that. One of them, the current contract is for five years plus five optional additional one-year terms. We felt that that was a little long and not in standard compliance with our county policy. And so one addendum will reduce the duration of that contract to three years with two additional one-year terms. That's consistent with what we do. And the second thing deals with toner. You can provide, you can buy original toner or you can buy aftermarket toner, basically, which sometimes can be harmful for machines, even though it is usually cheaper. However, Pacific Office Automation is such a large supplier for HP, which supplies almost all of our printers, that HP is providing them the toner at the same price as it would cost for aftermarket. So we have updated the contract or this addendum will, will indicate that they will provide not aftermarket toner, but true OEM or original toner, which is beneficial to the county. With that, that's all I had and I'm open to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioners?
I want to thank Ricky for doing that, Commissioner, if I can here real quick. I see that Quinn Fowers is on our Zoom call today from our Information Technology Department. I, if I remember correctly, Quinn's the one that brought this to the attention of us several months ago. We have been in a lot of contracts with other vendors, but Quinn, a big win for you. Thanks for looking out. This is a team effort and to save that 80,000 plus the toners and the electrical and all the other stuff. Way to go, Quinn. That's a great, great win for the team. Attaboy. We passed you the ball and you shot it. This time it went in. That's a great one. Good for you, Quinn.
Quinn, you deserve it. You and Ricky deserve kudos on this.
So I want to also give some accolades here. I think this was well done. I'm very pleased with what's happened here. The savings are great. This is, it's just a wonderful project. So Quinn, Ricky, all of you, way to go. This is really good and thank you. This shows an initiative on your part and I really appreciate your initiative, you guys stepping forward and doing this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I forgot to mention too, this was a tremendous effort from our financial department, from the attorney's office, from our purchasing office. And we had representatives on the RFP, Sheriff's Office, and from operations and from our parks and rec, some of the heavy, heavier users of, of copy equipment. And the feedback was great and everybody really participated hard. We asked a lot of hard questions and we pushed and got some fantastic pricing. So thank you to the, all of those involved.
Yeah, let me just second that, Ricky, Quinn. This has been a team effort. This is a great example of operating in a business-friendly environment, making sure that we look after those dollars. Sometimes in government, we get accused of not paying attention to the small details. The taxpayers of Weber County should be very happy with the initiative that you took on and with the savings. Even though it's not huge for our budget, it just goes that we're looking at the small dollars because a lot of times those small dollars through the years add up to big dollars. And, and that is, this is a perfect example of paying attention to the, the details, paying attention to those small dollars and what we can do in every case to save taxpayers and make the best use, beneficial use of taxpayer dollars. So with that, Commissioners, I'm open for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract as presented by Mr. Hatch today. Thank you, Ricky.
And I'll second that.
We got a motion by Commissioner Harvey, second by Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Ricky. Great job.
Thank you.
Let's go to action item F2, request for approval of right-of-way contract by and between Weber County and the following for property acquisitions for the 2550 South. Right-of-way Kimberly Hackerson and Cindy Hackerson, Jason F. Van Isco and Melissa K. Van Isco, Natalie Ruiz, Craig Kelly, Carol Kelly, Andrew Kelly, Russell Jackson, James Reese Trembley and Rowanda J. Joy Tate G. Trembley, Larry Day Dalinga and Sharon H. Dalinga, Beverly F. Bailey, Stephen S. Blakesley and Blaine H. Atkinson. And our presenter on this will be Mr. Gary Myers. Gary, you with us?
I am with you. Can you, can you guys hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Perfect. So we have been busy. We've acquired a lot of property along 2550 South. What we did is we prioritized the eastern end of the project or end of the corridor to accommodate the current project. West Haven is putting out the bid to begin construction on here shortly. What you see before you represents everything from the boundary line between West Haven and Weber County, west to the intersection of 3,500 for the corridor preservation, for an 80-foot right-of-way through there. That was our priority so that West Haven could move forward. And yeah, you've captured all the names there. I've got 11, 11 different contracts. One of them, particularly the Kelly's, had two contracts. They had two parcels that we had to purchase right-of-way from. We followed the WACOG process. Each of these went through a appraisal process where the current market value, fair current market, market value was determined and reviewed by an independent appraisal company. And yeah, what I've got for you is their contracts for your approval today.
Thank you very much, Gary. Commissioners?
So Gary, did you say this finishes up all the right-of-way acquisitions on 2550?
No. Great question, Commissioner. This really is probably, I don't know, if I had to throw a number at it, 25% maybe of the right-of-way we need to acquire through and along 2550. But what it does is it allows West Haven to move forward with their construction funds because we were purchasing property that they're going to build some, some improvements on.
That's good.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Harvey, questions?
Oh, I don't. I, I, you know, this is, this is again, what we do in, in the unincorporated areas as mayors of that particular area. And I appreciate what Gary, you and your team have done there. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. No other questions? I'm open for a motion.
I'd make a motion that we approve the purchase contracts of the right-aways.
Second? Move by Commissioner Jenkins, second by Commissioner Harvey. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. That's approved, Gary.
Thanks, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Good job.
Thanks, Gary.
It looks like that brings us to the end of our action items. Let's move to our final item. Commissioner, before we adjourn, Commissioner comments. Commissioner Jenkins?
Yeah, this is an important part of what we do. You know, it's hard managing the county under these circumstances, but I'm continually impressed by what's happening. Our good people, the things that they're doing to keep us going, keep things working. Well, when I look at the crews that are out being involved, they're trying to keep their social distance and working very hard and we're still getting a lot done. The road crews are busy. When I look at what we're doing in the Health Department to handle these COVID problems we've got, our numbers are pretty steady. We, we keep getting close to 100 and then we keep going down and we've not gone over that 100 mark yet. And so I'm excited. I hope we stay under it till we get this thing under control. But the county's running well and done a good job so far and I'm really pleased and proud to be part of it.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Harvey?
Yes, Commissioner Jenkins, do you want to talk just a little bit about the transfer station? Sorry, we're going to ping pong here a little, Commissioner Fror, if that's okay?
No, that's great.
Yeah, the, thank you, Commissioner Harvey, for reminding me of that. The transfer station does reopen today to the public and so we're back in operation, full operation. The transfer station itself never, ever really shut down. They just shut down to household waste. And they're doing what they need to now, the distance, and we're ready to accept those people. So we're open again today.
Good to know.
And if I can, Commissioner?
Commissioner Harvey?
Yeah, thank you. I want to, not just with the transfer station, but we anticipate, should everything stay, if people continue to follow the health order, we, we think that we can open the North Fork Park individual campsites during the first part of May sometime. That's exciting news and, and I appreciate not just Marty Smith and Jennifer Graham, but Todd Ferrario up there and our people and they've been working with the Health Department. The group sites, of course, wouldn't be available, but the individual campsites could, could come available in early May. And so we look forward to that. We also want to let people know that one of the larger quarter horse races in the country is moving out of the Washington, Oregon, the Pacific Northwest area and is actually moving to the Golden Spike Event Center, where they're going to do a virtual horse race in early May out there. The public won't be allowed there to view in person, but they will be allowed to view online and we'll get more information to people about that. But that's a, that's something that's coming to our area. It's never been here before and so our staff are finding different ways to, to still utilize the resources that we have. I can tell you that in the last couple of weeks that TEDx Ogden, which this is going to be our, our fourth year. TEDx was started just a few years ago in Ogden. It's a very popular event and auditions took place over the last couple of weeks. We have a very, very strong field of presenters coming up and that TEDx is, of course, it's been moved back, but it'll take place the 22nd of August. And they're also doing some auditions for Ogden Musical Theater, virtually, those kind of things. And the Kids Act Up programs, a lot of things virtually in anticipation for a good, strong, healthy summertime. So there are still things happening around here. And one of the neatest things I, that came about from our meeting even this morning, Commissioners, was a military graduation that was scheduled at, at one of our facilities, but it'll be done now virtually. We're people from all over the world and, and they're our family on the military. You know, those military families are scattered all over, but they'll be able to still participate in the graduation and because we have great people doing wonderful things with the IT, they'll be able to continue doing that, practicing safe distancing, but still be able to do some of those, some things like that. So we're really, really pleased with the work that our Culture Parks and Recreation and our libraries are doing to keep things moving along, but keep people safe and healthy. And also our facilities are, boy, they've been working their tails off getting things cleaned. Every book has been sanitized and cleaned and we're just, I'm so grateful to Linda Wang's gardener team at the library for what they've done. But that's just a brief report and appreciate the time for comment there, Chair Fror.
Thank you. Appreciate those.
Chair Fror?
Yes.
Commissioner Harvey, could you talk to us a little bit about? Commissioner Harvey, could you uh talk to a little bit about the archery building?
Thank you so much, you know, uh, our team is wonderful, we uh. A lot of people, especially those who have been around Weber County for a number of years. Back at the uh, in, in the late uh nineteen nineties, we closed the existing landfill. Which was just off of Twenty-Fourth Street and just over the viaduct there on the west side of the railroad tracks. That landfill was capped, it's turned into be a beautiful asset, uh, Observation Park is what that, that is now. It is a place where people can go out and ride bicycles and uh participate in cyclocross, in fact. That was the state cycloclo, the place for the state cycloclo, cyclocross championships uh, uh, for high school last year. But a little further west of that, off of F, like Frank, F Avenue, there's kind of a little ravine that goes down in there and in that ravine. Uh, is a, we're, we're constructing with uh money that we've received from outside sources, not Weber County money. But we're uh, uh, constructing a, an archery building that's a hundred feet wide and two hundred and fifty feet long. It's a beautiful building, the structure that's poured, it's uh all the walls and most of the roof is uh nearing completion on that. The interior's being done, the electrical, the HVAC, the plumbing is being worked on. Uh, our team was successful in securing, you know, these, the, the government, federal government has these government-only auctions and they. Purchased a, a bulldozer to actually do some leveling and, and for six hundred dollars. And uh, six hundred dollars plus transportation, we got that here, we got it working and our guys have been, uh. They've graded out a beautiful parking lot with some other areas, the archery, the people with archery. In the area will be very, very happy that an all, it'll basically be an all-ability, all-weather. Uh, type of facility that people can get out, walk around and use and shoot at targets and. One more asset again that's being uh funded by Pittman Robertson money, that's the money that's off of uh. The licenses when they buy fish and game type licenses, uh, being constructed there in the Division of Wildlife Resources down in Salt Lake, uh. They've given us some money down there, it's just going to be a wonderful facility, Commissioner, Forre, Commissioner Jenkins especially, you've done. Wonderful job and, and, and helping us get that thing moving forward, it'll be a great asset for our county and its residents. And if any of you have anything, I think you've both been down there, if you have anything else you'd like to add, it'd be great.
The only thing I want to add is I was out there a couple of days ago and the roof is just about on and so that's, that's pretty much closed in now. And uh, it's a good time to see it, boy, you, you go down there now, you get the real scope. The offices are all uh framed up and ready to go and they're ready to start uh sheetrocking and. That uh, it really looks like a building now and it's, it's kind of exciting.
Commissioner Harvey, anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you, I'm, I'm excited to see that asset, uh, when it's completed up and going, it's another going to be a great asset for Weber County. Uh, let me just close by saying, I, I don't think there's any doubt that these are trying times for a lot of members of the public. Uh, our Weber County staff here, I couldn't be more proud of, we continue to come to work, whether that's virtual or in-person every day. I continually get asked, when are we going to open business back up, when we going to open the economy back up? I wish I had the exact answer to that, all I can tell you is this, that we are making decisions on a daily basis by the data we receive. Uh, it's my intention, I believe with the other Commissioners, to open up as soon as possible. Uh, we, we just signed an order, I signed an order with the Health Department uh yesterday. That took us through to May first, it's my intention between now and May first to look at. The direction of where this uh infection, what our infection rates are doing. And looking for opportunities for us to do what I'm going to call soft openings after May first, whether that's North Fork Park along with others. But please understand out there for members of the public, for business people. That it is our intent, as soon as possible within the health environment we have, to start opening this back up uh. As quickly as possible without undue risk to other members of uh, of the public. I think that the quicker we can get back in operation, and I say that from a business standpoint, I say that from the county standpoint. The better off we're all going to be, so you have our pledge as your elected officials, that we're taking this very seriously. We're also taking very seriously our economic impact and want to get back into operation as quickly as possible, so. Uh, feel free to call us with your questions, your comments, we're open for business. Uh, we're open on the internet for uh public comment as well as you saw today. And we welcome your participation in any of our work sessions and public meetings. With that, uh, Commissioners, I'd take a motion to adjourn.
So move?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, thank you Commissioners, members of the public, staff, appreciate your attendance today, talk to you soon.